Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined today by founders Greg and Amanda Killian. Hey, guys.
Hello, Helen.
Hello.
Excited that you are here today. We're also joined by Kim and Julie and Jessica and the youngest and newest member of our Get Oiling family, Grace. A little mini graphic designer, you. So excited to have you guys all here today while we are ogling at the baby. Y'all go ahead and leave us some comments in our chat here. Let us know where you're coming in from. If you are here today hoping to get some hands-on help, we would love for you to go ahead and put that request in the Q and A here on the live. We actually had a cancellation for our, for our live website review today. So if you are here today and you've been working on something and you want eyes on it, you want help with it, you want ideas, even if you're not working on something and you don't know where to get started, let us know, let us know in the Q and A and we will get you queued up and we will work together on our call today. So I've been gone for a couple of weeks and a lot has happened in the time that I've been gone. Namely, Greg did a complete overhaul of how our custom page section editor, as well as the actual page settings editor itself works. And there are a lot of really cool things that you can do now that were not possible before. And I was actually just sharing with the team here, one of the, one of the systems that I used to use, going back seven, eight years, I used to have to use very expensive like infusion soft and all these different systems to plug together and create something that you can now do entirely in just your Good Oil and site. And I mean, this is available at basic, guys. We're talking like you could do this for $29 a month to be able to have this full-scale system that legit, the system I'm talking about that I used to use used to cost upwards of $1,000 a month. So, big deal. So we're going to talk about that today. We're going to talk about our, our ability to collect more than just names and emails and phone numbers from our custom forms on our landing pages. And specifically, I'm going to show you an example of one that I use. I'm going to talk about how you can tweak this to have better care calls. And we'll give some examples of what that can look like and to have better prospect calls. And even if you are collecting leads on your site, you have a way to filter out and know whether or not somebody who's opting in already uses essential oils or if they already use Young Living. That'd be pretty cool if you could have that in place, right? Let me know in the comments if that sounds interesting to you. Oh, check this out. We've got Mississippi, UK, Upstate New York. Hi, neighbor. Texas, Finland, South Carolina, WNY. I'm not sure what that is, but hi. BC, Canada, Arizona, Texas. Y'all, we're all over the place. I love this family. We're just so big and so great. And everybody's talking about how they love the updates. So let's go look at them, shall we? I do see a couple of things coming in in the Q and A. Angie, you now have a review. But we will be looking at yours. Tell you what, if you will reply in the Q and A, Angie George, please, with your URL and whatever you would like to have looked at, I'll pull you out after we go through our review here. And then Linda, please do that for me as well, Linda Lucas. All right. And then in terms of Camille, just asked a great question. For those of you who are just getting started with us, or maybe you're not even with us yet, or you know somebody who might want to come to us, we actually do have migration services. So if you have an existing website somewhere else and you'd like to move what you have over to one of our platforms, that's something that we can do. So just reach out to support@goodoiling.com and we can get you set up in that direction. So thanks for asking, Camille, and for being open to refer your friend. But what I want to do first is show you guys an example of what a custom form can look like on your Good Oil and site. And this is an example of the use case here is for someone who, if you're a coach, be watching this very closely, have eagle eyes on this because this is something that works incredibly well. What I typically do for someone who is a potential client for me is I will have a place where you can apply for a call, meaning I really want to get a feel for where you're at before I actually sit down on a call with you because I want to be mindful of both of our time and make sure that we're fit, right? So people have to fill out more than just their name and their email to get onto a longer call with me, right? So instead of having them go and enter their name and email and then go off to some survey site somewhere and fill out a bunch of questions that I want them to answer and then get onto my calendar. Now we can have all of this done directly on the Get Oiling platform. So I want to show you guys what that looks like. Let me pull that up real quick. And how many of you guys, maybe just a quick show of hands, how many of you here today do offer some kind of coaching or consulting service, even if it is something that is strictly for the purpose of consulting and offering the best products that Young Living offers for your people? How many of you would say that that is true for you? But this awesome, yes, a lot of us, maybe even the majority. So pay attention to what I'm doing here. This is something that in particular, and again, you don't need to be a coach separately. You could simply offer what our friend Jackie calls a wellness consult, which is just to say you're going to have a dedicated set of time, so maybe 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, with a person one-on-one where going into the call, they have answered a handful of questions, like what are your health goals? What are your wellness goals? What do you want to achieve in the next 60 to 90 days? Or something like that. And we're able to ask those questions on a forum here so that when we have our call with them, whether this is a prospect call or you should definitely be doing your care calls this way as a wellness consult, then, then you're going to have all of the answers to those questions inside of your system, ready to go when you're on those calls. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and show you guys what this looks like. So that's not even the right one. Okay, this is it. Strategy call landing page. Okay. Very, very simple page, and I'll show you guys how this is built. People are going to be arriving here from some other place on the site. So it's not, you know, this isn't the homepage of a website, for instance. They will have arrived here because they heard that they could get on a call with me and then they're offered this. Maybe some of you have been on a call with me and this is familiar to you. This next part will not be because this is brand new as of yesterday afternoon. So when they say, let's do this, they want to apply for a call with me now and they click this. Now we've got the full form to fill out. They've got name and email address, which we obviously need. Those are two things that you absolutely need to have. I've got what's the one thing you most want to accomplish on our call together? And there's a long form answer where they can type that out. What's your, in my case, I'm working with folks who are in Young Living, so I need to know what is your current brand partner rank? So I've got all of those here for you. You could say, if this is a wellness consult, you could say something to the effect of, of these following areas, what are most important to you right now to work on? Digestion, skin, sleep, things like that, right? You could put that into a drop-down list here. So you could see what their main priorities are. You could also do this with a, you know, a multiple choice sort of checkbox here if you wanted to follow that example as well. And then, you know, I'm asking more qualifying questions and digging deeper into more qualifying questions as we continue to roll through this. And I am making all of these necessary to fill out. So I need to have these answers or they cannot book a call with me if you don't answer these questions. But guys, don't be afraid to require questions answered for someone to have your time. No one will respect your time if you don't first. And sometimes we have to instruct people how to respect it. And in this case, we ask for completion of certain questions. All right. So we put this in place. And then, yeah, so look at this. This is so cool. What we used to be able to do is just have your name, email address and phone number. And then we could add a handful of extras, but we were always kind of limited to, you know, can they fit it in this line? Or can I fit the question I want to ask in this line? And now we have all of these beautiful options. Now, if I were to fill this out, I go to a thank you page on the next page, which is very, very similar to this in structure in that there's a picture of me and it says, check your email. I'm going to send you a link to book on my calendar. And that's that. Let me show you what this looks like after someone has filled it out, which is really cool. So I'm going to go find me the email address. Okay, so let's just say that I had someone sign up for a wellness consult. If I'm going to be, you know, working with someone and potentially getting them started with Young Living products, they booked a wellness consult with me and now it's time to have our call together. Now, what I can do is go find my note right down here where this person filled out the form and I have all of their answers right here. Right? So every answer to the question. So as I am on a call with them, and guys, use this for your care calls, have a questionnaire like this for your care calls so you can ask more effective questions, dig a little deeper, make sure that folks are using product the way product is designed, getting the best benefit out of it that they can, and so that you're always clear and on the same page as to what their goals are so that you can always be recommending more and better products for them to help them get their great Young Living story. Because once they have that, once they have their Young Living story, they're going to easily share. They're going to want to share. You feel compelled to share when you found something that's changed your life. And our job as brand partners is to help change a life so that they want to go do the same, right? So use questions like this in a form, like the one I've just showed you. Oh, and by the way, this is where we go when, when we book. And we do have another training on the weekly work session on how you can embed a third-party scheduler like this one into your site. This is the other piece of that funnel. Once they have finished on this page, they're sent an email with a link to go to this page where they can then pick a time with me, they fill it all out, and then now they're on my calendar. And once we're on a call together, I have all of their answers to the questions, right? We could also be much more effective. For those of you, I don't know, how many of you have ever done a care call? And, and somebody just really needed to talk to you for like an hour and 45 minutes and it just kept going and going and going and going, right? I see that. Oh, those, those hands are flying. Do you see how this kind of framework? If you are going in and saying, all right, here are the questions. We're going to answer these questions. Now you can book on a call with me. And now we're, the parameters of the call is this questionnaire, right? We're going to be going over the answers that were supplied and giving next steps. Now your care calls can be extraordinarily effective and take place in half the time. Well, especially if, you know, if the calls are going on for an hour and a half. I think a 45-minute to an hour-long care call is perfectly fine. But you could even get it down to 30 minutes and do a really great job and really truly serve your people if you are providing structure and parameters. So are there any questions that are coming in about this? And how this works and how to set it up? Actually, I want to go in and show the setup of the page itself, but we can be answering questions as we go through. All right. So this is where we find the setting. So this is a custom page. And just to back up a little bit for those of you who are like, whoa, whoa, slow down, because I see you. All right. So in our, this is our page list, but if we just go to our dashboard here and we go to my site settings, that's where we're going to find custom pages. You could also just type custom pages up here. And just go there. I feel like I should, should I shrink the screen a little bit? Is this easy to see?
Yeah, if you shrink the height of it, then I make it a little easier.
Yeah, I thought that might be the case. Okay. So perfect. Okay. You never know with this great big screen. Thank you. All right. So, so now I'm here. If you wanted to create a new page from scratch, you could certainly do that. You could use any of the templates that we have here. Let's see, these are, these are homepage templates. So I would put something like this maybe on a professional services template. So get ready to take control of your health and wellness. This is about a consultation. So I would change the verbiage of this to maybe say, apply for a free consultation, right? And then, of course, you can list out, here's the stuff that we'll cover on our call and things like that. And then in the settings for your page, you're going to go to leads. And then you're going to come down here to where you have the lead capture form fields. So the field label, like this checkbox here, Greg, I wasn't on the training. So this will actually make the label show, right, on the page.
It hides the field. It's like an enabled, the field will completely disappear. So if you uncheck it, then phone won't even show up at all.
There we go. That's what it is. So if you want the field to show up, then you have it checked. If you want it to be a required question that they answer, then you check this box over here. So then you can simply click add field. And let's just say this is for a wellness consult. We can say, what is your number one, number two, number one wellness goal? Right now, we're going to require that. And let's give it a long text so that they have the opportunity to say a little bit more if they need to give any more background. If we want to say, let's just say if you wanted to have like on a scale of one to 10, how bad is this affecting you or something like this, right? So I'm just going to put scale of one to 10. You would want to fill this out a little bit more clearly with what you want to say. Here we can say dropdown list. Pick one. Is that right? Drop down list, pick one. There we go. I'm going to go to edit list and add an item. If you leave the first one blank, then it's going to show it blank and they actually need to click it to select one. I also, I have done on mine, I put select one as an item just so that it's clear that that's there. So that's what we capitalize. So one, two, right, three, four, if you skipped five and you put six in there, you put a five in here and you drag them up there. You can also drag these guys around. And, and then, of course, you can fill this out the rest of the way and people can actually select a scale of one to 10. So just like we had, you saw in the answers to the questions, I go back here and find my contact here. You'll see, even if they picked like a, so a number one to 10. So on a scale of one to 10, I have this question on this page here. So if we go to a scale of one to 10, I have select one. And then I've put one through 10 as options there. And then, of course, you can see that this person picks 10. So that's there. So those are the types of things that you can put in place there. What I would do is just really keep it very simple and straightforward. So if you, if this is for a wellness consult and this person is not using Young Living yet, one of the questions that you could be asking, or maybe you don't know whether or not they're using Young Living yet and you need to know whether or not you should have this kind of call with them if they're already using Young Living and you don't have something else to offer, you can say, do you currently use essential oils in your home or self-care routine? Wire it. And let's make that, let's do a dropdown list, pick one. And we're going to make that a yes or a no. Okay. And then, and then we can say, if you answered yes to the above question, what brand do you use? Right? So now, and now they have short text here. Now you can know when somebody applies for a call with you whether or not you should, you know, politely reply and say, well, I am, I also use Young Living oils and I'm a brand partner. So, you know, if there's anything that I can help you with, I'd be happy to. But this is a call that I have that is actually designed to serve those who might become future Young Living customers, right? So this gives you a polite way to be able to ascertain and then politely decline if you maybe have a following of people who are, who are other Young Living brand partners or customers with whom, you know, obviously you want to have a relationship, but maybe they're not a fit for this particular offering so that you can be mindful of your time and how you're spending it, right? So, so that's basically it, you guys. If you have, if you're going to be setting this up as a care call or a sort of wellness consult, you do want to have a campaign email that sends out to them an opportunity to book with you. And you want to have the redirect on this page, which is send the lead to the section here, send them to a confirmation page. So just like I mentioned to you guys before, when someone fills out this, the form on this page here, I don't send them straight to my calendar. And, and this is something I've talked about on other trainings about lead magnets before in the past. The reason why we don't send them straight to the calendar is sometimes people either don't put in a good email address or like, like on purpose, some people do that. Their, people are weird about things like this on the internet. I don't know what it is, like anonymity makes people strange. But sometimes people purposefully don't put the correct information in. But more often than not, if there's an error, you know, somebody's accidentally put their email address in incorrectly. And so you've received all this input from them, but they aren't getting the email from you to book. And now there's this disconnect, right? So this is actually sort of a net that you're placing underneath your automation here to make sure that you don't drop the ball with anyone, even if there is sort of an accident or, you know, some kind of an error on their end or yours or what have you. So what happens is, and I'll go back into this page and show you guys what this looks like, how I have it set up. And you can set yours up the same way, even if yours is a care call where mine is a coaching call funnel. So I have on my page settings here, I am redirecting under the leads tab. I am redirecting to this page here. Let me show you what that looks like. So this is an application confirmation. So I say, hey, I'm excited to chat with you. Here's what comes next. First, make sure you've got my email address in your address book so you don't miss anything that's coming my way. And then head over to your email now and look for a link to book or call. You could also say, if you don't see an email from me within the next five to 10 minutes, hit this button or, you know, email me at the email address above or something like that so that we can connect, right? Just in case this really great lead that wants to talk to you managed to mistype their email address, right? It happens. And I promise that the more exposure you get and the more you grow in this, these things will happen more than you would think. So, so have this in place. And then the campaign that I have attached to this page here. I can go back and find it. The campaign that I have attached here is called the Get Growing Game Plan Call. Let me show you guys one email, one single email, and I'll show you what's in it. And you guys can use this, the same setup for care calls and for wellness consults for potentially Young Living leads. I'm calling this game plan. So let me find that here. All right. One email that says, let's book our call. And it says, thanks for completing the call application. I'm excited to chat with you. Here's the link to book the call with me. And this is the link to, where did it go? You guys saw it. The one with the, with the calendar embedded in it, which is, let me can you find this one? Where I've taken a calendly booking event and I've copied the code into the page, which again, we've got other trainings on exactly how you can do this on our weekly work session. So the flow of this is they land on this page, they fill out this form, they go to a confirmation page that says, check their email, they check their email, the campaign's arrived that has the link to go off to a page just like this to get on your calendar. And so you make this particular page, right? So this would be, so for your care calls, for instance, make this your monthly wellness check-in call for your downline or for, for your members, for your customers in your Young Living team. So you make this and you make this available in your vault. You make this available in your monthly newsletter. You make this available in your Facebook groups or wherever you are serving your members so that they can book themselves on these wellness consults, right? Or when you're reaching out and saying, hey, it's time for a wellness consult because you're doing the follow-up because you don't just wait on your people to do this, right? You send them this link and you say, hey, I'm excited to have another chat with you. Go ahead and fill out the form on this page and book a time with me and we can, and we can continue working toward reaching your wellness goals, right? And if this is not for your team, but it's for leads, then you could have this in your email signature, right? A link to a page like this where they can do this application in your email signature that's over here in, under your contact settings, under general, put it in your email signature here. Put it in your, at the bottom of your blog posts, put it in your social links, wherever you want, in your link and bio on Instagram. Give people an opportunity to book a call with you by first filling out a form. Now, a couple of things that I want to cover as well, and we were sort of chatting about this right before the call started. You can do something that's sort of like a survey with this, except you're not going to see a readout of survey-style data, right? So you're going to get people who respond in particular ways. You're going to be grabbing information. The best way to use this sort of survey feature really is for pre-call, whether that be for your leads, for your brand partners or for your customers. And it really helps you to be more effective so that when you are in your one-on-one communications with your people, you're able to see what's going on. Oh, and one more thing. And this is really cool. You know how you get an email from Get Oiling when you get a new lead from your website? When you get your email from Get Oiling, all of these answers are included. So if someone goes to a form like this and they fill it out, let's just say it's for leads and you want to know, like, I got a new lead come in, let me see who that is. What did they fill out, right? That is all in your email and it comes to you right away. If you have that setting in place and that's actually on the same page where you can edit your, your email signatures, is where you can say, send me, right? New lead notices. Yeah, new lead notices right here. And you can change those settings on your individual pages as well. So your lead settings for a given page are going to show up on that page where you can say, you know, keep it as the default, which is on that, that general settings page for contacts settings. Or you could say, only notify me for new leads or don't notify me at all, right? So you can do that on the individual pages. But if you just keep the defaults, you're going to get an email from Get Oiling as soon as you get a lead and you're going to see what all their answers are. And so that's a pretty, pretty, pretty cool thing, right? High fives to Greg on this. We, we see a lot of questions in the Q and A, so let's definitely dig into those. And just a lot going on in the chat too. All right. So Heather question. Could you use this type of form to get a testimonial after you have completed coaching services? Yes, yes, yes. This is so good. Absolutely. Yes, you can do this. I love that. Another thing that you could do after services like that is your campaign, the email that sends out. You could also have that campaign ask them to, to hit reply and send a video or something like that, right? So would you be willing to make a video testimonial for me? And then the email might send details and now you can say, hit reply and attach the, the video here or something like that. You could go all crazy with this. Absolutely. Be a great way to get a testimonial. And providing forums with specific questions are the best ways to get the testimonials you want for your business. Because if you just go and you ask someone open-ended, hey, would you give me a testimonial? Unless they're a copywriter, chances are they're going to be all out in left field, center and 20 miles away like where you want this information to be showing up. That's a great idea, Heather. Use this for that. All right, Allison, can you show us what that form looks like in Get Oiling after it's been filled out? Would we find that in the contact card? So, so that's actually, I can go back here and show you. Once it's filled out and submitted, you find that on the contacts card. So this test contact of mine, and we're in my system here today in my Get Oiling account. So my, my little test guy here filled this out yesterday. And so you just go over to the past action section and it says, note, apply for a call, which is the name of, of the page, I think. Right? It's going to be the, the name of the page is going to be what you're looking for here. And then you can actually see all of the answers that were given right here. So it's all in one place. Pretty, pretty cool. Okay. So that's done. What would a basic question page look like? What to ask for just a wellness or care call? Should it be different from member versus non-member? These are great questions, Allison. So to start, for, the answer is yes, it would be different from member versus non-member. Because you're going to want to be asking questions about what products have you been using? How have those been working for you? Have you been taking them as, you know, as the label prescribed? If we're talking about supplements or something like that. Your questions are going to be a lot more targeted to Young Living product use for your care calls. Whereas for leads, you want to be asking more general questions, right? So what are, you know, what's, what's your biggest wellness priority? What are you struggling with the most? What have you tried? What's been your favorite thing? What's working for you? Things like that. You know, keep it, keep it pretty simple and straightforward, but think about the questions you would be asking someone if, you know, your neighbor from across the street, you know, who's your Facebook friend was like, hey, I see you've been doing wellness stuff. Like I, can we talk? Then you, what questions are you going to ask them? Just start using those. You'll get better at asking questions the more you do it, right? So over time, you'll learn that some questions are more effective than others because we kind of zoom in a bit more with experience with that. Really good questions. All right. When they finish the survey, do we need a new confirmation page or the grow confirmation page? So I would create, if you have a very general, if you have a very general confirmation page that says the info you're looking for is headed to your inbox right now. And I mean, I would keep it as general as the info you're looking for is headed to your inbox right now, then that's fine. If it's anything other than that, like this is, it feels different, right? Like somebody's, think of their experience. It's a person who's going to fill out this form. If it's not congruent with the experience that you want from them, then you may want to create something separate. So I wouldn't use in the case of a call like this because it is applying for a one-on-one call with me a specific type of experience with me, which is qualitatively quite different than somebody who maybe opted in to get an ebook or, you know, a freebie or a PDF or something like that. So I'm not saying that you can't reuse the same thank you page that you use elsewhere, but I would just be mindful of the experience you want your person to have. So what is, what is it saying? Is it saying the same thing that you would want to say when someone's expecting to get a link to book a call with you in their email? If so, go for it. Otherwise, I'd make a new one. Julia asks, can we use this form to ask others to provide testimonials for the products or even services you offer like coaching AFT or ask them for permission to share the testimonial on social media? Absolutely. Yes. Hundred percent. That's such a great idea. So you ask for the So it, you ask for the testimonial like we were just talking about previously. And then have a yes or a no. Do I have your permission to share this testimonial on social media? And maybe have another field below it, you know, is there anything else that you want me to know? So if they wanted to say, you know, use my testimonial, but don't use my picture or something like that, then you could give them that opportunity. I love it. Really good ideas. Um, how would you combine this with the Platinum Care Call Systems? It seems like they could work well together. Allison, yes, you're talking about Jackie's, uh, Jackie's system. Um, so yeah, 100%. What Jackie does is, um, is she sends, and this is one of the, um. One of the free things that you guys got from that training, uh, which is a, a saved reply that says, you know, let's book a call together. So what you would do here is instead of sending a link to get on the calendar directly. You would send this landing page that has the first, and it wouldn't be an apply for a call. It would be a let's book our call, fill out the questionnaire and then, and then you'll be able to book a time with me. So you're sending that link so that they're filling out the questions first, then they're getting on the calendar. So yeah, this plugs in perfectly with what you've learned from Jackie and her Platinum Business Systems Training. Hundred percent. Right, Heather says, is there a way to add them to a follow-up campaign that is triggered by them scheduling the appointment? Or could that be done by, uh, through Calendly? So, hmm, this is a very good question. Uh, Calendly is a third-party service that is not plugged in, uh, with, uh, with Get Oiling. And since what we're doing is actually moving people over to book a call. Or, or you know, maybe it's embedded in your site when you're doing it, you're not going to the Calendly site like you saw my example today. Um, if it's leading to a one-on-one call with you. What I would do is you're going to be in their contact card anyway. Like, you know, reading their answers and stuff when you're on the call with them. Have, like, go apply the campaign that you want to them when you're on the call, right? It, depending on what the purpose is. Now, Calendly does have the ability to send a reminder prior to the call, which I think is a really great idea. Uh, so if you have that level of Calendly and you want to use that, you could certainly do it. Um. Where that's concerned, like, but otherwise, if it's something that's just really more of like a drip campaign. I would just go and apply it like from your call, right? When you're on the call and doing that. But it really would depend on your use case, Heather. Okay, Juliet, is there a step-by-step process on how to create this form from start to finish? Including adding in the calendar option, thank you page emails, et cetera. I just don't want to miss a step. So we don't have this totally spelled out as it stands right now. But if you want to write this down real quick, the CliffsNotes are as follows. You're going to have, and this is from the, the prospects experience. You don't necessarily build in this order, but since I don't have it all spelled out in a course or a training format for you, this is how it goes. First, they land on the landing page, right? The landing page is what has the pop-up form and that's where all of your questions are. Okay, that's what you're going to be sharing with them or placing in the email or a saved reply or whatever. Attached to that, that page, or it's a custom page with the landing page form on it, okay? Attached to that custom page is a campaign that sends out a single email. That has the link to book a call with you. Okay, and that's another page on your Good Oiling site, just where you've embedded your Calendly form. Or you just send it straight off to Calendly or Schedule Ones or Acuity or whatever it is that you're using. We have a wishlist item of having our own scheduler integrated, but you guys, that stuff is really complicated. And, uh, and, and it takes a lot of time. So we'll see if that, that materializes. Greg is, Greg's got a magic wand, but. We need a few for that. Um, all right, so, so you've got, now you have two pages. One page is where they opt in, they fill out their form. The other one, which they only get a link to via that campaign email that's attached to that first page. Is where you embed your Calendly booking link. And again, we are your Calendly booking form. That is something that we do have a training on, on Weekly Work Session. Uh, and so you also have a third page, which is really simply a, um, a custom page that says, hey, I'm so glad you applied. I'm so excited to talk with you. Go check your email. I'm sending you a link to get on my calendar right now. If you don't see it within the next few minutes, uh, you know, hit the button, hashtag contact. Uh, or, you know, click my email above and, uh, and submit an email. And that's it. The whole thing. Um, if you guys are interested in having a full soup to nuts, here's how you do the whole booking funnel thing. I'm trying to remember, have we done that before? I feel like I've done something like that before, Greg.
I found a weekly work session about a year ago that said something like that. It was like how to set up a call booking funnel. I can put that in chat. I did put it in Q and A, but I'll put it also in chat here. Maybe that'll help.
I think I, I would have probably used the same one. It just didn't have this, this form on it. So, um, where I talk about the survey in that particular training. Uh, that is, um, that's where you would forego the survey and you would just have your form here on the page. I thought I did that. Thank you. All right, um, where is this again in campaigns? So. No, uh, this form where we're talking about like asking all of the questions, this is in custom pages. I'll show you guys real quick. This is in custom pages. So if I go to. My site settings. Custom pages. And then this particular one is strategy call landing page. So in your custom page, whichever one you're using to collect this information from your people. It's going to be under settings. And then under this leads tab right here. And down here under lead capture form fields is where you're going to find all of these options. Okay, so, uh, that's where that is, Jen. Uh, does the system send a notification when someone fills out the questionnaire? Yes, by email if you have that enabled under your contact settings. How many questions can we add? Oh, there used to be a limit that I was aware of. Greg, has this changed?
Uh, well, part of the changes, it was six custom fields, but I think now it's a total of 50. Um, if you have a need for more than that, you know, reach out. I mean, I'd love to hear about it. 50 is a lot of questions and most people would probably not fill them all, all out anyway. But, yeah, yeah, it's 50 right now.
Yeah, I think mine's on the long ends and I think it's close to like 12 or 15. Um, but yeah, okay, let's see. Oka, hi, I'm gone for some time. Where would I find a session on how to invite for healing class? Any examples of what words, scripts, et cetera? Okay, so, um, there are a number of different, uh, trainings on our weekly work sessions. Uh, one of them was, I believe it's about taking your classes online. There's a two-part series about taking your classes online. Uh, and so that's actually showing you, and there is some example verbiage in there, uh, that you could use, Oka, where you could, um. Basically set up a live event in your Get Oiling Events Manager. You can have a campaign attached to that that welcomes them, thanks them for signing up and lets them know the details of the event. Reminds them of an, of the event before it's live. And then of course, once you have the event, you record it. The next video, uh, in that two-part series actually shows you how to, uh, to turn that into something that's evergreen. So if you want people to register for the replay, so they enter their information on a landing page. And then they get to go and see their replay video, they're able to do that as well. Um, and that is, um, Greg, is that something you were able to find? Is it something you were able to find on the YouTube channel or are you looking for it?
I'm looking for it now, yeah. Okay, if you were asking me a question, one of the videos started playing in my ear, so I couldn't hear you. But I did find the first one and I'll put the second one in the chat here too.
Okay, perfect. The first one should link the second one in the description as well. So those are, those two are linked on, on YouTube. All right, Marissa, hey. As a V I I design and develop sites for coaches and entrepreneurs, is there a way for me to create a resource bundle or a template? So that I'm not recreating each form from scratch? So, uh, great question. Um, what you could, I mean, this custom page that you were just looking at, if you wanted to create something like this. Um, and maybe put placeholder information in place, right? So ask this kind of question here, this kind of question there, and maybe you have a supplemental resource. Uh, where you have them write their own or something like that. That's super doable. Um, and then you, yeah, you would just be working from a single set of, of templates if I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah, and the resource bundle does bring the form across. So like if you copy the page from, you know, put it in a resource bundle and copy it to another account, it should copy the form over as well. Um, so you get the page plus the form.
Excellent. Yeah, and everything that's attached to it, right? So if you're attaching, if this page has a confirmation page attached to it, then that's going to attach in the bundle. Just need to make sure that you grab the booking page as well. I mean, I, I do this, like, so for people who work with me one-on-one, I have bundles that I import over into their accounts. And then we edit those things out and swap out the information. So, um, so yeah, you could totally, totally do that. And we were doing that, Marissa, that's awesome. You should catch up. All right, so Allison, uh, so for the three pages, survey is in the landing page. Oh, so no, it's, it's a custom page. We're using the lead form in the landing page. That's in custom pages, Allison, right here. So this is a custom page. It's under here, my site settings, custom pages. All right. The lead form is right here under settings, leads. This is where you fill out your lead. This is where you create your lead form, all right? Um, and then they link to a campaign right here that has one email. That goes, that, that links them to a page where they can book. Yes. Yes, yes. And that's also, all three of these pages are custom pages. Uh, one of them has a lead form and that is this one right here that you see. All right. Is it more of a face-to-face class? Uh, um. Okay, so, um. Hmm. Trying to figure out how to answer this best for you, Oka. Um. So in terms of, of, um, better inviting, um, responding, things like this. Uh, there's definitely some work session topics going back over the last few years. Uh, where we talk about inviting. Um. But I don't know of one in particular for classes that I could point you to. I will say that if, if you're going to be hosting a class, um, that, you know, you should definitely be. Aware of who in your network is already interested in that kind of content. And maybe importantly, others in your network who are serving people who are interested in that kind of content. So if you are a wellness coach, uh, there may be a chiropractic office who would love to have you come and give a talk there. Because they want to have that, that value add for their patients. And that gives you an opportunity to get in front of new people, right? Uh, and maybe you can offer some kind of a bonus to the chiropractor who gives you the space in their office and invites their, their people, right? Just as an example. So, um, I would, yeah, I would be focusing kind of on, um, on who you can connect with. And then importantly, if you're going to do a class of any kind and you're going to hold it virtually recorded. So that you can use it on an ongoing basis. So that when you're in a conversation with someone, you can say, oh, hey, I did a class on that. Would you like the recording? And now you're sharing the landing page link with them so that they can get access to that recording. Right? So now you're actually able to take the thing that you did. And, and whether one person showed up or 10 people showed up, it's a thing that you can use into the future. So, uh, you know, that a hundred people could see it over time, even if they weren't able to be there that day. And your work became worth something much more, uh, after, after you had done it. All right, time to upgrade for more pages. Yes. Um, all right, uh, can you show how to start to create the lead form again? Uh, Dana, real quick. Um, the lead form is if we go to our, um, go to your page here, this is a custom page. It's under settings. And then under leads, this tab right here. We're going to scroll on down. Obviously you want to say whatever you want to tell them to do, so your call to action to fill out the form below. Uh, and then you start adding these. Now, I think it's just these first three that are here to start. The name, email and phone. Um, you can choose what things are absolutely required, uh, for them to be able to, uh, fill out the form to completion. Uh, I like to require all fields that I want here. Uh, if you're not willing to answer the questions that are here, we probably are not fit in this circumstance. No, if we're talking about just giving away a PDF or something like that, we don't need to have a ton of, of required things here, right? Um, so anyway, so all we have to do is simply ask a question. So here's one, what's the, one thing you most want to accomplish in our time or on our call together? I have selected long text here. And as you can see. Long text looks like this. It's a bigger field. These are the short answer fields, which looks like, uh, short text right here. So that's what short text looks like. Uh, and then you just, you keep adding and you add by click, clicking add field. And then obviously make sure this is selected, add whatever question you want to have here, require it or don't. And then add one of these. So you could give it a list and ask them to pick one from the list and then you start adding items from the list. Or if you wanted to do what I did. You could actually go to, uh, what did I do? List, pick multiple. And when I created the list, I added these, uh, four things, these four options. So people have the option to say, well, it's this one and maybe it's this one. Or they could select all of them or one of them, right? So that's what that looks like. Uh, and then basically you, once you get them all done, make sure that you've got your campaign attached. Uh, make sure that you're adding a tag here so that you could search for all the people who've ever filled this out. Uh, and then you hit done, you save it. And then you use it, of course, once you, you also, just to reiterate, make sure that you are redirecting. Uh, down here, you can use a page on your site. Uh, this would be what strategy call application confirmation. That's the one, that's the page here. When I set this up, we didn't have this option. So you could also put the URL here. Uh, but that is how you set up the form on this page. Uh, save it and then view it and then test it. So go through, make sure everything looks like you want it to. Uh, write it all in for yourself so that you could go over and, uh, and, and see the answers and how it shows up in your system. And, uh, and, and that way you'll know that you're giving the experience that you want to your people. All right, uh, am I able to share Get Oiling bundles to Attractwell and vice versa? Marissa, yes, you create the resource bundle and you swap Get Oiling with Attractwell. Have fun with that. All right. See, if I create a bundle in Attractwell, can someone, yes, yes, you can use for both, absolutely. Just swap the name URL in both. And, and it'll be useful on the other platform. All right, do you have a weekly work session about the types of questions to ask? Or go back to the Platinum Work Systems. I have scheduled a care call at the end of the month with a member and I feel like I should send her a question or survey. Uh, so where it comes to asking the right questions. The person you want to listen to's name is Jackie McLaughlin. And we have multiple trainings with her on our work session. And of course you have access, jackymclaughlin.com forward slash platinum. Uh, is a free resource for Team Y L where this platinum leaders, 20 years in the business person who knows how to answer these questions, ask these questions. I have shared these insights. Uh, I would, uh, Allison, I would reference the questions that she asks in the care call video. For this, uh, for, for the signature wanting to build. I would use Jackie's questions for sure, a hundred percent. Use hers over mine any day. Uh, Dana, this is not a preloaded page. Um, this is one of mine that I've created, but it's a really simple one for you to create just using a lead form, following the instructions that we, uh, that we've shared here today. You guys have so many good questions. I love it. At Marissa, call me. I want to talk to you. All right, so Angie, I've got your website here and I am excited to chat with you. You say you've been working on your website and your vaults. Feel like I'm not using it the way I should be. You have a homepage and you need direction on everything. Okay, great. Uh, will you raise your hand for me so I can pull you out and we can talk? There you are. Hi.
Oh, unmute. Can you hear me?
I can. How's it going?
Okay, good. It's good, good. Thank you. Um, so here's sort of where, what I feel, uh, you actually looked at this homepage once before. And I really have not had time to edit it, but there was like a lot of text that was in autographic and you suggested that I change that. Um, in the meantime, I also have connected with Grace Collaborative. And, um, I started another homepage that is somewhere in. Gil, I don't know where they all are, right? So, um, in there, I've been working on it. I just haven't switched those out yet. I will be honest with you, I'm not real happy with some of the graphics and, well, personal photos. So that's not a reason though, not to get my website out there. Um, so I've been working on my vaults for my team. I just feel like I'm doing things. But yet I still have not put it out there because I don't feel like it's either ready or I, and, and that's crazy. Like I have all the things. So I just want someone to say, okay, let's do this, this, this and this, push the button and get it going, you know, so.
Well, the fact is, the fact is, Angie, it is ready. You're always going to want to make changes. Done is better than perfect. And this is absolutely beyond done enough to share. So don't let perfection get in the way of the massive progress that you've made because you have made a lot. I've just logged into your account. I do want to see real quick. Cause you could always like, it's so easy to swap out your homepage once you're ready with the other one, but use the one that you have right now. Just use it, like, don't.
Yeah, the, yeah, well, that one is ready. Uh, the one with, that I did with Grace Collaborative is not ready, although it's really pretty, but it needs, that's it. It's not ready. It's not ready, but it's coming together. So I just, like, down there at the bottom, the, you know, free resources and the, those are things, like, I know that Get Oilin has, or you guys have some already done. I just feel like I'm missing the link or something, I don't know. I feel like I need to take a couple of days off work and just do this and get it going.
That's a bad idea, I mean, just to get everything out of the way, I feel like that often. Like, I just need to do, like, I need to go, like, rent a hotel room, so I work at home. I can't get away.
Right.
I could just spend a week, just, right, take the, who is it, I think JK Rowling does this. She's a big advocate of, like, you know, go book yourself a nice hotel room somewhere for, like, a week and, like, do all your writing, get all your work done.
Yeah, so I have, I think, in August, I sent out my first, like, in a long time team email. And then I just sent out a Zoom notice, you know, so these are the, I'm like, I've got all this. What's, why am I not, what am I not utilizing, you know? I feel like this would promote my young living and capture those new leads.
So, so what you want to do first is use this because you have this. But one thing you do want to do as soon as you can is let's finish this up because it offers a freebie.
Right.
It offers a freebie, oh, this is not linked correctly, by the way. Just got to make sure that this links to the published landing page. Right now, it's going to an edit, an edit page. You see where, right now, it goes there? So here, let me go to, where is this, my word, I'm all over the place in here. Oh, here, okay, so custom pages, so that's going to be this one, I think. For this link.
Yes.
Right now, you see where it says, anywhere you see app right here, you know that this is an internal link, not an external link, right? So this is going to need to be, if you go to your landing pages, you probably have this already because you got this from Simple Grace, the Simple Start to Natural Living, most likely. You're going to hit view.
So I did edit that in Canva, so it's, okay, so, all right.
Maybe, do you have a different one?
I, well, I don't know, I don't know, I haven't gotten that far.
Okay, that's fine.
It could still be in Canva, you know, but I have edited it. That's what I'm saying, like, I do the things, but I never completed, and I'm like, eh.
Well, we just got to get it done, so here, let's change this link out here, so we've got a good link.
Okay.
And I'm going to paste that, so that's done. So now that's, that's there, that's ready to go, and now you have something that you're offering. And just FYI, like, while you're still working on this and figuring out, like, okay, maybe here, I'll offer the Simple Start to Natural Living that's linked up here at the top of the page. Maybe here, I will say, sign up for the blog newsletter waitlist, because I don't have a blog yet, but I'm going to. And if you want to hear from me, then put it here, right? And then here's my lead group on Facebook or wherever. And then put that information here. So once you've got that, here, let's, let's do something real quick to make your existing page super effective. I'm going to take this little stripe right here that has a lead magnet in it, and I'm going to put it on the page that you already have published, so you can start sharing that now and stop waiting, okay? So look at what I'm doing here. There's, I'm in this section, there's this little three dots.
Right.
I'm going to click that, code view.
Okay.
All these wacky, wacky words and letters right here, I'm going to copy all of it.
Okay.
And now we're going to go back over to your pages, and we're going to go to your homepage. Is that this one?
Uh, yeah, maybe, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to add a new section, doesn't matter what kind of section it is.
Okay.
I'm going to go up here, just like I did on the other one, I'm going to select all of this, paste the one from the other page.
Okay. Nice.
So now, share your homepage, you have a lead magnet on it.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
You're good to go, yeah, keep it, keep it going and, and just don't, don't wait until perfect.
So, one more question, the Simple Start to Natural Living, if that is not the edited version, do I just click on that in the, like, where would I go to upload the correct PDF?
So with this, I would go, well, to upload a PDF, you could go anywhere on your site. You could literally go right here and then come over here, and, well, this is insert and manage files. So you would actually be going right here to upload a file, grab it from your computer, delete it from this field, so it's not sitting there. And then you just go back over here to your, to your landing pages, and that's where you would, or your campaign, or wherever it is connected to that funnel from Simple Grace Collaborative.
Okay, 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 okay. Well, one step at a time. All right, thank you, yeah. Oh, and then one more thing, on the, on the vaults, we can upload, like, Zoom videos, I heard you say that earlier, so that we can do the Zoom intros or Zoom, whatever education we're teaching our team.
Yeah, so, but, but you're going to want to have that posted somewhere, so I recommend Vimeo for this. That's what we use.
Okay.
If, if it's something that is public facing friendly, that you're okay with other people seeing, YouTube is an option. But I really recommend using Vimeo.
Okay, I have a Vimeo, okay, perfect, all right.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, guys.
All right, take care. All right, Linda, will you please raise your hand for me, Linda Lucas, so I can bring you out to chat? Thank you for being on today. And thank you, Angie, for coming out as well, hi, Linda.
Oops, hello, good to see you, everyone. Hi.
Absolutely, excited to have you on today, so tell me what kind of feedback you're looking for.
Well, I feel like, well, I need a lead magnet or for this, this homepage. I don't have anything, I don't have a blog. So there are a lot of links in here that are not working because they're not linked to anything. And just an overall, and I had somebody that helped me with this, and she was very good, and I really appreciate that. But I also, like, my name up on the left-hand corner, Linda J. Lucas, that to me is too big. Maybe the name right there in the middle is too large. I don't know, maybe some feedback on.
Yeah, so I think that, I, I think that this is fine for now, as, as things stand, because you're just getting started and learning how to use this and put this to use in the way that you're working. I will say that, and I say this frequently on, on our calls and on reviews, that this section right here is really going to be important real estate to speak straight to your ideal person and to say, this is who I'm here for and how I help them. So, so maybe crafting this statement up a little bit with a little more specificity. So I help who, who is you? And then, and then what is it that they get from, from healing, from energy healing and essential oils? So I help who this you is get the outcome of these two things, right? So, you know, is that, you know, more abundance and fun and connection with your furry family or something like that? We want to put that right up here. And then whatever it is that we want to give away to this person to help them get in closer contact with us, we just want to put as close to that statement as possible. So we call that above the fold, it's like a newspaper. People used to pick up and buy the paper because of the story that they could read while the newspaper was folded, sitting in a stack. And so people, yeah, people will choose to stay on your website and continue reading, wanting to learn more if what's above the fold grabs their attention fast enough. And we're super distracted in this day and age, so you really want to get right on them, right out of the gate here. Now, that's, we do have a few lead magnets here. I mean, a lead magnet can absolutely be, I've created a community of... Dot, 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 it does this, this, this. Do you want an invitation to join us, click here. And then you can have them fill out a quick form, answer a couple of questions like we've been talking about today. And then in the email, you can send them an invite to your group.
Okay, I'm just writing this down.
And here for the blog, you can say, coming soon. Get on the, get on the notification list. And so have them, you know, sign up on a landing page or on this page, however you want to set it up, so that people can be tagged with newsletters, so that when you write your first blog post, you'll send out the, you'll send that out to those people.
Okay.
And then, of course, oh, you've got a great about page here. Love it, awesome, awesome. And then, do you have a page for your energy healing, oh, this is great. It's so pretty.
Yeah, isn't it nice, I think it's pretty too.
Really good, we did this, did an excellent job. So, oh, how to pamper your pet in healthy ways? This is a kind of thing that you could offer on your homepage as well, this is a lead magnet. Do you have this written up already, how to pamper your pet in healthy ways?
Yeah, I have a guide, I have, you know, when you click on send me the tips, that's, send them a document or it goes to a document.
You should absolutely put this on your homepage. So just like we saw on Angie's page, if we refresh this, what I did up here, where we've got, you know, grab my free download, you can have something like this just up at the top of, of your homepage that, that says, you know, free ways to pamper your pet.
So I would use the same one, then.
Yeah, absolutely, and you would just, so what she's doing here, and this is how the Simple Grace Girls have their setup, when you grab the free download, Simple Start to Natural Living, it's going off to a landing page. So you can do the same thing, so you have, and what you would do is you would create a section right here, and then you would just create a link to that landing page that we were just looking at, this one here. So it, they would just go off to this page.
Okay, I'm like, where do I find that page, but okay.
So, well, I mean, you can find it right here on your website. And, and if you want to find out, if you wanted to edit this, that's going to be, here, let me stop my share here real quick so that I can log into your accounts. And I'll show you where you find it, but it is going to be under your contact settings right here and landing pages. And you've actually just got the one here, so when you're ready to share it, you just click this view button and you can take this link and copy that. And if we go to your homepage, is this home here?
It may be.
So we would say, oh, sorry, my Siri thought I was talking to it. Of course, I just said that word again and it popped up. Okay, so, so we go to a section header here.
Okay, cool.
And, and then we are going to change the color to, oop, you know what, here. Let me go back over here to edit this page. I'm going to grab color off of your homepage. I can go back to, where did that go? Okay, I'm going to grab this dark red color. There we go, which is on your site, so that's there. We'll change this font to white so it stands out. And then we'll, we'll make this, I don't know, maybe 30, okay? So what was this called again? This was Free Download, How to Pamper Your Pet in Healthy Ways?
Yeah.
And then we're just going to link this. All right, and I am going to underline on this so that it shows up better, and I think this does need to be just a little bit smaller. So now on your homepage, you actually do have something right above the fold. And then just what my recommendation would be is to really think about how we can, maybe even swap what's here and here so that you can have people really see what you're about right away.
Yeah, rather than, oh, about me.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are great places on your site to really go into about you. And about you is really going to do a lot of the heavy lifting to help people know that you're someone that they want to work with. But for us to get their attention so that they pay attention long enough, we've got to make it about them first.
Sure.
Yeah, this is great, I'd love to know, like, this is really, really nice work, whoever's, whoever did this, it's really pretty. Oh, Ally, okay, excellent, well, Ally's doing great work, it's really, really nice.
I haven't talked to her in a while, yeah, I wanted to connect with her again to, kind of help me finish up with it or add some other things.
Awesome, so do you have any other questions? I mean, I, I really love what's here, I think it's just a matter of making a quick swap here. And then just making sure that you are really talking up the benefit, right? Like, what are you going to get when you join this? Maybe think a little bit about, like, why someone wants to join a community? What's missing in their life that would make them want to join a community? And speak to that, right? Because we're, we're really going to acknowledge that we're, we're seeking to fill a hole that they're feeling, right? And if, and if that comes across when they arrive where we are, they're going to want to take advantage of what we're offering.
Sure. So with the, the first bit up there at the top, is that just like basically copy and paste into the other section, or there's two separate sections? Not that, where it says my name there?
Here, right here?
Yeah, there.
Let's, let's look real quick, so these are separate sections, so we could pop this up.
Just take the,
right?
Replace the text in each one. Swap it out.
Well, here, if we do, let's look at that real quick. Like that?
Oh, that's kind of cool.
Yeah. Love it. And then just what you want to be doing, just as a journey, not as a, before you release, you should, but you should start sharing this with the world as quickly as possible. But, you know, your journey will be to spend more time with your ideal people, asking more questions about what they're going through as it pertains to how you can help them, and start infusing the language that you use on your site with their words so that you can speak more clearly about how you help them, right? So you are, as you know it, lovingly supporting them and their pets with energy healing and essential oils. But if you were to go and ask somebody who you have helped in this very way, they're going to speak of that quite differently. They're going to use different words and say, you know, she helped me to overcome this, right? So I hope this type of person overcome that, that kind of thing. So just be on a journey, an intentional journey to kind of sharpen and refine your language in that way, based on the work that you're doing with them.
Okay, I'm writing this down, good, thank you. I do have another question. So I haven't used the, and I haven't used the vault at all yet, but I want to get people from another website, just the contacts from another place into my Good Oilin contacts list. And I know they've talked about it in the past, but can you kind of briefly go over that with me? Like, do I have to have them opt in?
Where, where are they currently, are they on a social platform or?
No, they're in marketing sense.
Okay, so what you would do is you would go to your, you would go to your Marketing Sense dashboard, and you would find your contacts and you would export the file. And that's going to be in a CSV file, similar to what you would do if you were exporting your list from your VO. And so, once you have that, you're going to come over here to import, and this is under contact settings. And there's actually a full sort of breakdown of how this works, there's also a video of how to do this, I believe that's right here. Walks through it, okay?
Yeah, I'm familiar with how to do this part.
Okay. Yeah, so, so this is, you would be importing them, and then because they've already opted in on the Marketing Sense site, if you've been using that for leads, otherwise they're in your VO, and that's like, you know, for your people anyway. Yeah, but you would, you would tag them. And if you have tags in your Marketing Sense system, then you may want to copy those tags over so that they're similarly organized. You know, so if they're leads versus customers, that kind of thing.
Yeah. All right, some of the ones that are in Marketing Sense are already in My Young Living downline. So they would be duplicates, I know.
So our, our system will actually be able to read those duplicates and not actually duplicate them. If they have the same email address, for instance, then, then they're going to be merged into the same contact.
Okay, um, so how would I know which one is the most current, though, if they're not, if they have different email? Well, they might not have a different email, but how would I know which of the, which of them are the most current?
So you don't necessarily. I would think that the most current, especially if these are from your VO, your most current is going to be. your most current is going to be in your VO, um, because that's, if, if, if they are Young Living, uh, customers, if they're brand partners, uh, so the, the most recent and, and correct is probably going to be in VO.
Okay, my brain is kind of thinking about this now, um, a little bit more detail. So maybe I can exclude the, uh, ones that are already in my Young Living downline because I'm getting those from my virtual office.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other ones will be people that I, you know, want to include in my, as new as contacts in my Good Oiling.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely. So, um, yeah, if you already have the organization in place over there, um, then yeah, just bring over the people who aren't already in your VO, because you're gonna be importing your VO regularly anyway.
Yes, exactly. Okay.
Good questions. Thank you for coming out today. Oh, please, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So the, the question would be, um, so for vault, having people putting in the men of vault, how would I do that with those contacts?
And so, uh, so what you do is when you upload the contacts here, uh, you're, you're gonna want to tag them, right? So that you can easily filter and identify them. And so all you're gonna do, once you have them in, is you're gonna go to manage, you're gonna filter and you're gonna go and search for the tag that you've uploaded them with. Uh, once you have filtered them, you're then going to go to, um, actions and then go to bulk contact actions. And then you're going to, we don't have a vault to add them to. Do we? Am I missing something here? I don't think so. Do you have a vault already?
Well.
In your member area?
I haven't created anything yet.
Okay, so once that's here, that's gonna be an option available to you to add them to a vault. Okay, that's just gonna be under your, so manage your contacts.
Yes.
Filter your contacts for the, for the people that you want. After you've filtered them, after you've filtered them, we go to actions and it's gonna be on that page there. So you, uh, add to vaults will be an option that's there for you.
Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you for coming on, Linda. We look forward to having you on again soon.
Yes, thank you. It's awesome.
All right, there's a couple of questions I want to answer before we get going. Thank you guys for sticking around and asking so many amazing questions. We go through a couple of these that are done and done and done. Glad you guys could come on and have a review today. Uh, it sounds like, Allison, you said, it sounds like you want to offer your main lead magnet on multiple pages, without a doubt. Yes, absolutely. People can arrive to your site from a number of different means. Uh, your blog posts, for instance, they may go to an about me page. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket here. So if you've got something great to offer, offer it on your main page, your homepage, offer it on your about me page, offer it on your blog posts, absolutely. Your site is most effectively used when it is gathering leads for you, for you to be able to convert into new customers. Neil, good question. How did I so easily grab the color? So right now, the screen that I'm sharing is, uh, maybe a quarter of my entire computer screen. I have a gigantic computer. Uh, so I actually took a tab that had her homepage and I drug it off to the side so that it was in a new window. And so what I did was I went and I grabbed the, um, the color, like, you know, the color picker. And we have a whole, uh, back page section, background editor thing that Jess and I did, like, a long time ago, uh, that shows exactly how to grab colors. Uh, but I just grabbed the color off her website directly. Another way that I love to do this is to have two windows open. One of them has the Get Oiling Page Builder and the other has Canva open to the brand kit, so that you can really easily go and grab. And that's just for section backgrounds. That's really the only place on our site where you can't just grab the color that you want really quickly. Uh, or at least I, I don't have that experience on Safari for Mac. Craig, tell me if there's another way. Uh, but I usually have to go find it somewhere else and I'll grab it. So, good question. Thank you guys for being here for this super long, uh, Jackie, you can call me. All right, y'all, um, it's been awesome to be back and just see everybody. It's pretty much, and, um, there are goodbyes and we'll be back next week. And actually, you guys, next week, it's not next week. Um, so in two weeks, we're gonna have a really special live work session. For those of you who are still here, get excited because we have a member of our community who has created a really cool resource that, in particular, for those of you who are intrigued by or into oils of the Bible, you're gonna be really interested in what has been done that's ready to share with this community. So really excited about that. That's in two weeks. Uh, and we'll be back next week for the same. Is Grace asleep, Jess? Okay, we'll see the baby next week. There she is. Okay, thank you guys for being here and thank you, team.
Thank you.
Next week.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.